Good evening and welcome to the May 12th, 2025 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. City Clerk Dean, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington has requested an excused absence. Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen? Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here. Councilmember Washington's requested to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Washington's absence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? It's unanimous and Councilmember Washington is excused. So we now have our first item of business, which is to approve agenda. And this is just the vacation that we have been talking about the past couple of weeks. So council may have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Christensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So tonight we have the continuation of the petition for vacation of certain right-of-way. This was first reviewed during Council Roundtable Meeting April 14th, including a public hearing and again on April 28th. No public comment is scheduled for tonight. So the goal for council is to deliberate and decide whether to number one, vacate, number two, vacate with conditions, or number three, deny the vacation. By the way, reminder, discussion of this legislative decision, public use of the right-of-way, and the city's interest in the River Trail project shall be discussed in public. As applicant has mentioned, litigation in their January 31st, 2025, and May 4th, 2025 letters, if council wishes to discuss potential litigation that shall occur in closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. So council, do you wish to go into executive session or begin this discussions? Councilwoman Christensen?
I'd like to go into executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Walton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous and we will go into executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I to discuss legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement or potential litigation lasting approximately, how long do you think?
Fifteen, ten, ten or fifteen minutes.
And we will start with ten minutes?
Yeah.
Ten minutes. Those attending would be City Attorney Dina Burke and City Administrator Mike Chambliss. And we will actually be going into a room back here on the first floor. So action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session and the recording of the meeting will actually pause until we return to executive session. And we anticipate by the time we can get there and executive session, it'll probably be 6:20 by the time we return. So please pause the recording. Okay, okay, it is now 6:24 and we just returned from executive session. Council, do you have any further things, further discussion on this matter? Seeing none? There's an option for motions. One is to vacate. One is to vacate with conditions, or one is to deny the vacation.
Motion to deny the vacation.
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway to deny the vacation and second by Councilwoman Christensen. Any other comments? Councilwoman Christensen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So for the purposes of today, we're being asked to vacate a street in a public right-of-way. And the analysis for that is that it can be vacated when it is no longer required for public use, or when its use is of such little public benefit as to not justify the cost of maintaining it. And we're asked to do this for a private entity to essentially forego a public right-of-way that is for the city. And I am not in favor of doing that at this point. It doesn't limit further opportunities to work with the applicants in other ways, but I don't think that we're in a position right now to, I don't think that it would be appropriate to vacate it at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilperson Johnson?
I would tend to agree because the property has been in use by the public in the past. It continues to be in use by the public and there are future uses for the public as well. So that's where my position is.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Just within the last few days, I've even, you know, seen that right-of-way being used by delivery services such as UPS and FedEx coming out on that particular right-of-way. So I do feel that there is still some benefit for, for that use, as well as the fact that there is an existing easement that is dated from like 1961 for some utility purposes already existing in that right-of-way. So I do want to make sure that we're maintaining those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, voting on the motion to deny the vacation, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous that to deny the vacation. Do we have any next steps? Councilperson Benson?
Uh, yeah, I think we should, um, we should direct Parks and Public Works to, I don't know, uh, negotiate.
Probably get an appraisal for the property. Councilperson Johnson?
Uh, move to direct, direct staff to seek an appraisal of the property to look at some purchasing options.
Seconded, that one.
Moved by Councilperson Johnson, same by Councilmember Benson. Any comments or questions regarding that? Councilwoman Cotton?
Concern certainly is still that the, the dwelling is in the floodway and so that, that is a concern as far as for, for all dwellings down there. I know, I do also live downtown and have been flooded out twice. And so I'm certainly aware of the, some of the concerns and limitations that there might be with that. But I do certainly think getting an appraisal done and, you know, seeing what we can do to make the owners as whole as we can.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilwoman Christensen?
Provided, of course, that evaluations come in and make those the appropriate, clearly. Just wanting to put that on, yes, on, on the record, but yeah, it sounds as though the, the applicants are wanting to move on from the property. And so that's certainly something that I would be in support of having the city have those conversations going forward if there's an agreement that can be reached.
Okay. Any other comments? So all in favor of the motion to direct staff to get an appraisal and possibly purchase the property? Say aye.
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson?
Wait. Sorry. Look quick, just to clarify, uh, the, the direction was not for staff to also do the purchase yet, but to assess purchasing options and do the appraisal, but not to do the actual purchase.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay, back to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? So that, that motion is unanimous as well, as well. Right. Seeing that there's no further business before council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the roundtable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Did we get the motion?
Oh wait.
Did we get the motion?
Oh, uh, so moved.
Second.
There you go. Councilperson Johnson and Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. And I believe you voted, so we are currently adjourned. Thank you. At 6:30.
So I have one of the boarder.
Council, this brings us to our regular meeting of the City Council. The time is now 7:00 PM and we just completed a roundtable. Let the record show that all council was present except for Councilmember Washington, who has been excused. Council, will you please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilwoman Cotton, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of our business is to approve the agenda. Council may have.
Second.
May have motion? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Walton. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Would like to add the agenda after the appointment to the Economic Development Commission, uh, appointment to Parks and Events Commission?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Christensen to add appointment to Parks and Events Commission following the Economic Development Commission. Is there any other voting on this one? Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And that has passed. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the agenda is approved with the appointment of Parks and Events Commission added to it. We now move to the ceremonial oath of office for our Community Development Economic Director, Mona Davis. Director Davis took her oath of office on April 30th, 2025. This is a ceremonial one, so her family can, um, join us a little bit to take some pictures.
Do we say it after me? Aye.
Say your name.
I, Mona Davis.
Have been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council of the City of Snoqualmie to the Office of Community Development, Economic Development Director for the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Having been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council of the City of Snoqualmie to the Office of Community Development, Economic Development Director for the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie and the laws and constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Yeah, get out of the way, guys.
Or whatever it is. Okay, all right.
Is this recorded?
Next item is AB 25-061, Appointment to the Economic Development Commission. So Gary Skiba has applied to fill a vacant position in the Economic Development Commission. He has lived in Snoqualmie for 10 years and is the owner of the No Boat Brewing Company. He has over 30 years of finance, executive, and leadership experience and recognizes how economic success is important to, to our city. So council may have a motion to confirm the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Walton and same by Councilwoman Christensen. Is there any discussion?
You're gonna celebrate this as a no-boat?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous to confirm the appointment of Gary Skiba. So, and I believe that Gary is online. Gary, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, Mayor. I can, I'll ask if I can be heard. Let's start with that.
Yes, we can hear you, Gary.
I, uh, and thank you, by the way. I would be lying if I didn't tell you that 10 minutes or 15 minutes ago, I realized that you were starting at seven o'clock. I thought I had missed this. But I want to express my thanks. I look forward to contributing to the extent able. And I know a few of the people on the commission and I look forward to it and I look forward to working with you all.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate your volunteering for the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is AB 25-061, Appointment to the Parks and Events Commission. Hadley Everts has applied to fill the, this position. She has lived in Snoqualmie for three years and wants an opportunity to give back to the community and be involved in the work that supports our parks. And she's a strategy manager for Starbucks. Council may have a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Christensen and second by Councilperson Benson?
Sure.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous and Hadley Everts is confirmed for the Parks and Events Commission. And I don't believe that she is online. Correct?
Right.
Okay. Next item is Affordable Housing Week. So Affordable Housing Week is an opportunity to raise public awareness and elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with affordable housing. So whereas people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development define affordable housing as housing in which occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities, and whereas the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% area median income, and whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas United to Raise Public Awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in Local Affordable Housing Week, activities to elevate critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. So I, Catherine Ross, Ms. of Snoqualmie, do here proclaim the week of May 12th to the 16th, 2025, as Affordable Housing Week. So you can read the rest of the proclamation online. And the next we are celebrating is National Police Week. So May 11th through 17th is recognized as National Police Week, where we publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. So whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Snoqualmie, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice, have been killed on the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36 candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the U.S. flag should be flown at half-staff. So now therefore I, Catherine, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim, May 11th to 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. Would you have our interim chief, Horace? Who'd like to come and say a few words?
Mayor, council members, interim chief Gary Horace, I just want to say thank you. This is important for all of us. The dedication of not only the officers on the road, but those that we have lost over the history of our country. It's important for us to remember those days, those officers and some of those, you know, we have had hit close to home depending on how long our career is. So I want to say thank you. The guys and gals out there working are out there serving our communities and doing the best that they can. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. At this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. No online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person or mail or email. First, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence for the record. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff or to engage in debate. The council will be quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. So public comments during this portion of the meeting shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in your comments being suspended. So with that, is there anyone here that would like to have a public comment? Please raise your hand.
Hi, Caitlin, North Bend. I'm here on behalf of Valley Pool Together because May is National Water Safety Month. In Washington, drowning is the second leading cause of unintentional injury death for children ages one to 17, and most of those deaths happen in the open water. Drowning is silent. It can happen in as little as 20 seconds. And 88% of child drownings happen tragically with at least one adult present. So with that in mind, many national organizations are starting what are called water watcher programs. So we have designed a water watcher program here for the Snoqualmie Valley. This is our Water Watcher on Duty badge. These are available for free for anybody in the community who would like to pick them up at the Village Project in North Bend and at Cascade Enrichment, again, completely for free. These are designed to be taken along on any outings that families or adults with children present have around the water. And they designate the responsible adult, it can be passed off to someone else when their time is up or they need to be done, and it outlines their duties on the back, which is, "As a designated water watcher, I will avoid socializing, texting, or talking on the phone. Regularly scan the water area, including the bottom if visible. Check the water first if a child is missing. Know the address of this location. Call 911 and administer CPR if necessary. Never leave children unattended unless someone else is holding this badge." So this is designed just to make sure that we don't have any statistics here in the valley that include a child not being watched while they're out on the water during the summer. We're also running an ad at the North Bend Theater designed to educate residents about the idea of water competency. And what the Red Cross has found is that when adults are asked if they know how to swim, a lot of them don't actually know what that means. So the Red Cross has outlined five tasks that you should be able to do to be able to consider yourself water competent. And those tasks are, jump in water over your head, return to the surface and float or tread water for one minute, turn in a circle and find the exit, swim 25 yards to the exit without stopping, and then exit from the water without a ladder. So, uh, we, what the Red Cross found is that 80% of American adults say they can swim, but only 46% of them can actually perform those five basic skills. So that goes into assessing our own risk about how safe we are around the water. That goes in with the five layers of protection that the National Drowning Prevention Alliance talks about, which are barriers and alarms, supervision, water competency, which we covered, life jackets, and emergency preparation. All of those work together. It's not just about knowing how to swim, but about how to assess your risk and assess the risk of others. So we're really hoping that we can make a impact in the Snoqualmie Valley and help everybody have a safe and wonderful summer when they spend time around the water. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none? Public comment is now closed. We move down to consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of the City Council meeting minutes dated April 28th, 2025, approve the claims report dated May 12th, 2025, AB 25-057, Microsoft Outlet Office, excuse me, 365 renewal, AB 25-060, Snoqualmie Watershed Form Interlocal Agreement renewal. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Walton. Is there any public comment regarding this? Seeing that there's no one in the chambers for public comments, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous and the consent agenda passes. Next is ordinances, AB 25-003, Amending Utility Rates for the Years 2025 to 2030. This is the third reading of ordinance 1303. Councilperson Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Ordinance 1303 will amend the utility rates for the years 2025 through 2030. The recommended rate changes are designed to match rate revenue. Am I, am I reading the right one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. The recommended rate, uh, changes are designed to match the rate revenue requirements, cost of service, balance, and rate design for the city's combined utility. The recommended rate changes are based on a 2025 to 2030 utility rate study conducted by FCS Group. This is the third reading of the, of ordinance 1303, move to approve the ordinance, uh, ordinance 1303, amending the City of Snoqualmie utility rates for the years of 2025 to 2030.
Second.
Moved by Councilperson Benson, same by Councilwoman Johnson. And any public comment? Seeing none? Council, is there any discussion? Councilperson Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the council for their patience as we waited the full study. I suppose it's technically a draft still, but something that is very visibly available to the public so they could read through it, understand what we did. It's a, it's a great thing to see. And also thanks to staff for helping to drive that effort and for our contractor for bearing with us as well as we got that together. I think that at this point, I think that we're, we have everything that we need to proceed forward.
Any other comments? So I also appreciate the very thorough review that you did over the past months, just taking in consideration of the impact on our residents and businesses, so, thank you. So moving to a vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay?
Nay.
So it was six, five ayes and nay opposition by Councilwoman Walton.
It was five ayes.
Yeah, five.
Okay.
I said six, but there's five. Five and then one. So, so the motion passes for amending utility rates for years 2025 to 2030. Next is AB 25-035, ordinance amending SMC titles 17.20 and 17.37. This is the first reading of ordinance 1307. Councilwoman Johnson, would you please read the introduction?
Uh, this agenda item is associated with proposed amendments to the city's downtown historic district relay, retail overlay zone, including waivers for or of special use regulations, the percentage of required retail use in the downtown, the geographic extent of the retail overlay boundaries, and the percentage of covered storefront window usage.
Thank you. And our community, our new Community Development Director. And our community, our new community development director Mona Davis will introduce this item and provide some information.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I just wanted to add a point of clarification that this is not an overlay zone. It is just an overlay on the zoning map. So this doesn't change any type of zoning. This is strictly to increase our ground floor retail requirements from seventy-five percent to ninety percent. It removes the ability to grant waivers for that. And I also wanted to clarify that this ordinance is necessary to change the municipal code. And then once this goes through, if it, and I'm assuming it will pass, then I will bring forward a resolution to update the mixed-use final plan so that we can also amend Center Street. But in order to amend the mixed-use final plan through a resolution, I need to have the ordinance passed first. So hopefully that helps make it a little more clear. I know we discussed Center Street in your packet materials, yet I didn't include a map of Center Street, so I apologize for that. But it's really not relevant until we bring the mixed-use final plan forward. So this ordinance is just to amend the municipal code. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counselor Cotton?
Just a question on, was doing away with the waivers. Were, what were the main times?
Thanks for talking to the mic.
What were the main times you were encountering people requesting waivers? Was it just when they couldn't rent it to retail space? Or were there other reasons that the people wanted a waiver?
It's my understanding that the waivers were being allowed when the, the, the properties were not able to lease to a retail establishment. So, and I think that's been going on for some time.
Thank you. Counselor Button?
Just a point of clarification. Those waivers could only be applied after a hundred and twenty days. And it was the community development director that had full oversight of those waivers. So that was a bit of concern expressed through the EDC, expressed through planning, planning. I may stand corrected. It may be through Planning Department or Planning Commission. Clarification.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah. EDC, Planning Commission, and I think some of us as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, and just to be clear, so it's not like we're trying to hide anything. For Center, it's probably even just pull it if you want to. But it's the, just the buildings that are facing Center itself. So it's not including Safeway. But also, that isn't technically for this exact agenda bill. That would apply to the resolution, which is why it's not in there. But it's not like we're trying to hide anything.
Right, it's the same, it's, we're doing exactly what the Planning Commission recommended that we went through the public hearings on. So nothing has changed since, since that recommendation.
Counselor Christensen?
Yeah, so I just have a quick question then for the, and this is up for, up on the ridge, but for the businesses and the locations that are facing Center. Does that also include where the Dollar Tree is?
No.
So it's just the ones that are directly facing it?
Yes, that's where the overlay will lay on top of. And then we will go back and revisit, you know, updating the zoning code, for example, and updating zoning probably next year, I'm thinking at this point, so that we can make the ridge consistent with the built environment up there.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So what is the current percentages of retail at Down Center Boulevard in downtown?
It was currently at seventy-five percent, and we've increased it to ninety percent.
No, I'm not asking what the ordinance read and what it will read. I'm asking what is the current percentage based on what is out there now of retail for those two locations? Are we doing, are we tightening more than what we currently have or less than what we currently have?
Uh, I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. I know that we're, I believe that we're under ninety percent now.
We're definitely under ninety.
Yeah.
So we'd be tightening it up.
We'd be tightening it up. All right, and considering we've done this in the past, why is, I understand one of tightening the waivers. Uh, but this is just no waivers. Was there consideration of other mechanisms under which we could tighten the waiver granting as a verse? I, I don't, if anybody knows about how the economy is going, let me know so I can do my stocks. But in the meantime, we don't know where we're going to be five years from now. And there may be want to, want to have some consideration of non-retail under, under some conditions. Whether that maybe comes to council or planning, yeah.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission talked extensively about it.
They did.
And they bent over backwards trying to find a way to make waivers work. And the issues became, it would be, excuse me, extremely difficult to find all the different ways that someone could find a way around. Did they really do their due diligence to try to fill the space with retail? I mean, we could come up with a list of things as thick as the dictionary, and they would find some way that, you know, to get around that. But as far as coming to council goes, which was their original idea, that was the plan for, they worked on this for probably at least six months plus under the assumption that, yeah, we'll switch it so it goes to council. But under the advisement of our various city attorneys, it was very much suggested that actually we move away from that because then the council could find themselves in sort of one of these situations where they're dictating who gets what. And that's a very treacherous situation to be in. Perhaps city attorney could speak to that better than me, but, yeah. That was the intent originally. Planning Commission walked away from that and seeing nothing, no better options. They decided that they could do away with the waivers. And in trying to balance that out with, okay, but there are also economic realities, they dropped from the one hundred percent recommendation for retail from EDC down to ninety percent so that, you know, there's going to be some give.
Counselor Benson?
So was it seventy-five percent, but we dropped it down to ninety? I, it's, it's, I don't, I'm, I'm not fully versed in newspeak yet, so. It, I, I'm, I have the same concern that this isn't, this is a tightening of, of that while also taking away the, any kind of option to redress any extreme circumstances, but.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, so two things on that. So what was in the code was seventy-five percent. What EDC had recommended was a hundred percent. And then Planning Commission went down to ninety. So that was the path of going to ninety, not seventy-five to lowering it to ninety. And then, oh, and then another very important thing is that any existing non-conforming uses would continue until the use that was currently being used, for lack of a better word, had fallen out for, I believe it's a period of two years. If I could just get the confirmation, I'm pretty sure it's two years, twenty-four months. And then, yeah.
Correct, if it's not, if it, if it's an existing non-conforming use and then they switch it out of that for twenty-four months, then yes.
Yeah. So like, like people who are currently living in some of these buildings, they can continue to use that as a residence, and they can even sell it as a residence as a continuing use, non-conforming use. But then if they switch it to, say, a business for a period of twenty-four months, then they couldn't, after that, go back to it being a residence.
Counselor Button?
Thank you, Mayor. To Mayor Pro Tim Holloway's question and concern, it's, we can always go back if we find it problematic where, for good reasons, it should be allowed. That would be a council, that could be a council consideration coming through Community Development Committee for discussion. So it's, it's, it's tightening it, but, you know, we always have the option to go back. I think the bigger concern was having a single staff member or director be able to make that decision. And that was, that was a bit of a concern all around. So, and that helps.
That's, that's a good one.
Any other comments?
Oh, one I think.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, also, this was an item that got more planning, and I've served for at least two years or something like that as the chair of the Planning Commission. So I've, I've been there for a while. This was probably the most public engagement that I've seen on the Planning Commission that I can remember since I got involved. So that was really nice to see the public getting out here and just sharing all their thoughts and their concerns and their suggestions, many of which ended up getting adopted.
Counselor Benson?
I, I was just going to ask if, if, if you feel from watching the public engagement that this was what the public was engaging about, was what they were hoping for.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, given some of the changes that were made following the public hearing and other meetings, the Planning Commission did make some adjustments, and the engagement decreased, if that makes sense. In other words, I interpret that the public seemed to be satisfied.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Mona. So the second reading and proposed adoption is scheduled for May twenty-seventh at the next city council meeting. Counselor Johnson?
And just to clarify, one other thing is that in order for this to go into effect on Center, we would need the following resolution that'll come after this. And also, if you do look at the zoning map, it's mostly for the ridge. There's Business Park, and then the whole rest of it is all one big beige blob. So we don't actually really have zoning there. It's all mixed-use final plan. And most communities that have such a development at some point do actually zone those out as appropriate. I believe that Issaquah recently did that with the Issaquah Highlands. So it's probably time for us to get on that as well.
Great, thank you. Moving on to committee, committee reports. Is there a report from Public Safety Committee?
No report, ma'am.
How about Community Development Committee?
No report.
Okay. And then first item under Parks and Public Works is Puget Sound Energy's presentation from May sixth, twenty twenty-five, that was reviewed at the Parks and Public Works Committee meeting. And this is included in your package and is for information only. Did you have any questions about that? Would you like to hear from our Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin or just review it on your own? So I think we'll review it on our own. Any other report from Parks and Public Works?
I was not at the last meeting. Is there anything that we need to?
Nothing at this time. Thank you. Finance Administration, there's a discussion regarding future standing roundtables. And City Attorney Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're a really busy city, and we're doing a lot of stuff. And along with that comes potential litigation. I'm anticipating we're going to have a lot of executive sessions over the next several months. And so one of the issues that comes up sometimes for staff members is by the time we're getting to the executive session, it's later in the night, and people, you know, brains start to go and people are tired. The proposal that we wanted to throw out there for discussion is we have the six P M. roundtable slot and utilizing that for the executive session time.
Anybody not like getting home early?
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Just anybody?
Well, there's also people coming from work too.
Right, but we've, we seem to have managed six o'clock.
Yeah.
So.
Counselor Johnson?
And also, I thought that I heard that that was, that the intent of that time was for executive sessions. Did I hear that right? So not much public engagement for that.
Right. Okay, everyone's fine with that?
All right.
All right, thank you.
That's good, thank you. Exciting, our, brings us to reports. First one's the mayor's report. So this year, we are doing another community survey, and this is going out, I'm probably the next week or so, to, to residents. And please encourage residents to participate in the survey. There were several questions that were added for the strategic, strategic plan. And there was one that was added for the community center expansion. Last survey was done in twenty twenty-three. So this one's kind of randomized selection of, of residents. And then there will be a second portion where the, anyone can, that didn't get a chance to take, it can actually take it online. So we'll have two different segments of randomized as well as just anyone can take it. And this is how they did it last time. Did you have a? SVGA meeting is on the twenty-eighth, and I think it's in North Bend. And their human services providers in Snoqualmie Valley will be doing a presentation. And there will also be discussions with John Taylor, who's the Director of King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks. So hopefully you can attend. If you haven't signed up, please contact your city clerk. Splash Pad grand opening is June sixth from two to four. So hope to see everyone there. We've been testing the water and it's looking pretty great. Also, council, there's a duty poll out there, scheduling a council retreat for August for strategic plan. And so hopefully, please go out there and complete the duty poll so we can get a date on our calendars. And finally, there's major traffic issues coming up with the I ninety interchange where they are going to be closing the whole area under the I ninety bridges. And so a lot of information's gone out already for the past couple of weeks. And so this begins May fifteenth, and it goes through like eight A M. May twenty-first. So we tried to avoid the area. There's all types of, we're going to have, I think, a reader board sign. And Wash Dot's working on just kind of mitigating some of the traffic impacts that they learned about several weeks ago when we closed our, closed the ramps as well from I ninety to State Route eighteen. So, but one thing they will allow, you know, under the bridges, is they'll allow Metro, they'll allow our first responders as well as school buses to go through. And that's all I have. So we have next commission and committee laser reports. Anyone want to share? Seeing none, then how about our department reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Communications reports that three hundred forty-eight thousand views of the Splash Pad testing video via Facebook. So I think that's going to be a popular attraction. Let's give community, community outreach a little attention here. There were three egg salents, Hans, the teen flashlight, the bunny hop, and the downtown hopping. The weather was beautiful, attendance was bit down, typical when the holiday falls during spring break. She, Nicole had a new event called the Sip It and Social. It was a crochet and knit event, and it was actually a success in partnership with Art Major, which is a new downtown business and the Snoqualmie Arts Commission. A second event is scheduled for May twenty-ninth. We had the annual volunteer recognition event at Meadowbrook Farm. We celebrated over forty-plus volunteers in a beautiful setting on a beautiful evening. One of the photographs that's included in this is the new reader board display downtown. That was a result of a request through the Economic Development Commission. It, it's very attractive. It, it shows the locations of businesses downtown so folks can find their way. Our fire department responded to a hundred and twenty-five incidents in April, and approximately seventy-four of those were EMS-related. Our I T department is nearing an important goal. So their goal for twenty twenty-five is to only have fifteen open tickets at any one time, and they've achieved twenty in the last week. So keep up the good work, Fletcher and team. The network infrastructure project is in its final stage, and I believe they're working the, the phones over at Parks and Public Works to get them transferred to their new system, which Fletcher is very excited about because it's a bunch more equipment that gets out of the server room once that's achieved. Public Works is busy, 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 busy. They have sports and it is the growing season, so it's the mowing season. And they're actually doing a lot of work putting a little funnel polish up at community park. Very unfortunate, community park got vandalized last week. So the brand new baby changing stations that were installed in the restrooms were damaged. And it's becoming a theme up there. So the police are working closely with Parks and Public Works to try to nip that in the bud. The Department of Corrections were here for nine workdays last month. They worked on cleaning up a couple of fence ponds and repairing. They worked on cleaning up a couple of storm ponds and repairing the fencing at those storm ponds, not fence ponds, sorry. And then finally, we have the police department. Arrests are actually up last month from last year. They went from 12 to 20. Calls for service was actually down a little bit. So a little bit of good weather got some people out there. So encourage you all to look at these closely. There's a ton of good data in there for you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have two executive sessions pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to potential litigation, litigation. The first one lasting approximately, how long should we do, maybe an hour? Yeah, let's say 60 minutes. Those attending the first executive session will include City Administrator Chambliss, City Attorney Burke, Finance Director Boutte and Interim Chief Horesey. Those attending the second executive session will include City Administrator Chambliss and City Attorney Burke. And that'll probably last maybe 10 minutes. So we'll take about a five minute break. That's how long it'll take to clear the, the city council chambers. And let's see, I guess we'll plan to be done by probably 8:50, let's say 8:50. No action is anticipated following conclusion.
Why don't we, instead of yelling out, why don't we go ahead and make it 9:15?
We never know how fa, how fast it'll go. So we can extend it later, it's like 10 minutes, 15 minutes. So no action is anticipated, following conclusion of the executive session and recording of the meeting will cease. And council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which reflected in the meeting minutes. So with that, we will actually have a meeting here in the city council chambers. And we will end our, our recording, the Zoom meeting and.
Chair?
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Depending on the discussion of the executive session, I may want to make motions post.
I'm sorry, motion to what?
I may want to make motions after the executive session.
Okay. So we will pause. All right, it's now 9:30 and we are returning from executive session. No action will be taken. So council, there be no further business, I will enter in a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
To be clear on the record, there was discussion that action may be taken. I will not be making motion. But it was a proceeding on with adjournment.
So motion by Counselor Johnson and second by, who did it? Counselor Martin? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? And we are adjourned.